was allowed to present. Renting is not comparable to homeownership. Homeowners have skin in the game. We take pride in our community, in our area. We watch out for each other. We have neighborhood watch. We care about the upkeep in our community. Renters, especially renters at Redwood who can stay there for as short as one month, they will rent on a month-to-month basis. Their other terms are six months. Those aren't long-term people. We are. We're talking people in this area that have lived here, us 30 years, 40, 50. We've raised children, grandchildren, you name it. We're long-term. Renters aren't. So it's, it's just kind of offensive when I get told that I'm the same as a renter. I was a renter back in the day when I was younger. Totally different animal. Totally different. I think with putting this issue, the rezoning issue, up before us now, the city is pretty much putting the cart before the horse. There are so many issues right now with Haber Road, Fox Road, National Road, with the lack of a traffic light, with very narrow roads. On Fox Road, as Dana said, it's a car and a half. And there are two blind spots. Very, very, very dangerous areas. Haber Road is also dangerous, especially when school buses are on it and you're trying to pass a school bus. You're in the ditch. You have the potential to go into the ditch. Anyway, I think the city really first needs to address those longstanding issues before it even thinks about rezoning. It's, you know, why would you rezone when you have known problems and then put something in and then say, oh, now we have more problems that we have to fix? Fix the problems you have now. As Dana also mentioned, there are two instances where Redwood was denied. When Mr. Thurman talked about they persevere, that basically means they're litigious. They don't give up. Redwood will fight and fight and fight and fight and fight till they get what they want. Because basically, they want all their apartment complexes in farm communities all across Indiana, Ohio, North Carolina, and wherever else. Anyway, that doesn't necessarily mean that all rezoning issues just have to be approved with rubber stamp. They don't. In this instance, as in the Liberty Township and the Auburn Township, they should be denied rightfully. In fact, in the Auburn Township meeting, one of the board members, the zoning board member aptly said, "The reason why people move to Auburn is to get away from all that." And the same can be said here. We moved out here to get away from that. We didn't move out here to be thrust into modern suburbia, which is what Redwood would do to us. So I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you both. Chief, who's up next? And also, folks, I want to please remind the next speakers, we need to stick on the zoning. I know everyone has a lot to say about this, but there would be appropriate time to talk about specifics of the development. This is only for the rezoning. I want to make sure that Mr. Thurman and also Mr. Coontz and Mr. Dorman acknowledge that you were sworn in.
I do.
I do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, Mr. Blanford?
Yes. This is Ellen Hogan at 10801 Haber. I think, I believe Dennis, Mr. Lieberman is our ward rep, and I think I speak for a lot of us that we would hope that he listens and understands that all of us are very passionate, that this is not something we want to see happen. We want to maintain the rural aspect of our area. We understand development needs to go forward, but it needs to go forward with the blessing of the citizens that live here already. We're, again, it's been spoken, we're the ones that have lived here, and we're the ones that deal with the area and take pride in our area day in and day out. So we would hope that he would support us, and all of you would support us in listening to what we would like to see happen with the area within our home and our community. Again, the plan has called out a city center, like Dana spoke, that we would like to see something that fits the need for a growing community, but something that all of us can be proud of as a city center. Again, and an apartment complex, if it would get rezoned, is not what we would like to see as part of our city center, but something that everyone can be proud of and is a good use, that can showcase our community and that we can all be proud of and have an input and a say in. So we would hope that you would listen to us as the community residents that live here and support us in that. Thank you.
I have something to add.
Go ahead.
I know one of the council members, the camera doesn't pan to everybody, but I know one of the council members said that they drove through the Tip City Redwood complex. And I can say that I've driven through Lebanon. Anybody who has read all 106 pages of Plan Clayton, this goes against, in so many areas, it's not, it's insane that it's even being brought up. These communities, the pictures that you saw, those of you that have not had the privilege of driving through a Redwood complex, the pictures that they showed, they look good, but you're looking at paper. When you drive through one of these, it's more like driving through a parking lot. Plan Clayton specifically states about getting away from the garagescape look, porches, things like this. All you see is cars and garage peaks. This, their complexes don't even promote community. And all I can say and advise is, if you haven't driven through one of these, do so before you vote. That's it.
Okay. Thanks to both of you. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to speak?
Hello. This is Pam and Dave Gruze, 10635 Haber Road.
Hi, Gruzes. Go ahead.
Just real quick, lived here 30 years, bought a five-acre farm for a reason. I'm under the impression that the zoning will automatically make it Redwood. We understand that the zoning may have to change a little bit, but we don't want Redwood here. We've lived here 30 years. We've paid taxes for 30 years, and we just ask that the council listen to us. We have beautiful properties out here that we take care of, and we do not want it to change poorly. We want the property values to go up, not down, and they will go down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the call? Okay, we're not seeing any other hands up or hear anyone speaking, so I'm going to ask one more time, is there anyone else on the call? Okay, then we're going to conclude the opponent's portion of this. We did receive some emails. Various members of council and myself received some emails directly from residents. Actually, some of those same folks were on the Zoom tonight, so it might be a little bit redundant, but I'm required to read each of these emails into record. There's about six of them, so if you'll just be patient, I'll read through them. It's important that these folks get on the record also. We're appropriately distanced here, so I'm going to take off my mask, and I think it'll be a little bit easier to read this, so just please be patient. Okay, the first one.
...
Yeah, yeah. We...
And all councils have received copies of them?
Yeah, yeah. All councils received copies of them now, but they weren't originally sent to individuals, so please bear with me on this. And the first one comes from Mark Counts, 5716 Swan Drive. Dear Mayor Stevens, I am writing to voice my opposition for the proposed Redwood Apartments at the intersection of National Road and Haber Road. My opposition is because Clayton's new development needs to be higher-end than apartments. Although these are purported to be luxury apartments, we need single-family homes. There are some nice developments on Winger that I would absolutely favor if they decided to build a similar development at this intersection. These apartments sound okay on paper, but in person, they appear to be a concrete and vinyl siding jungle. Despite what the developer says, renters do not have the same skin in the game as owners. I'm sure you realize this, being a Realtor. I actually know Mark, so he knows, he knew that. There are a multitude of self-evident reasons that Clayton should prefer and demand single-family home development or very nice condos at the very least, especially at this prime site. The traffic from 147 units at this site would put an undue burden on the intersection, the residents nearby, and especially the residents on Fox Road, which would become shortcut, which would become the shortcut to escape Haber. There are many other good reasons not to approve this development. I know that it's exciting from a leadership point of view to get a win for the city and potential tax base that it would provide. There are plenty of folks in Northwest Clayton that do not think this would be a win at all. I am not anti-development. I'm excited that the town center, the Village of North Clayton, has some exciting prospects finally. I would like to learn more about it. Please oppose Redwood Apartments, not good for Clayton. Again, that's from Mark Counts, 5716 Swan Drive. The next one comes from Mike Greer, who was, Mike was on the call tonight. Dear City Council Members, please see the attached letter listing my concerns for the proposed rezoning of the land on the corner of National and Haber Roads, Redwood Properties Proposal. I'm very disappointed with the recent ruling by the Clayton Zoning Board sending this proposal to council for your approval. I'm a lifelong resident of Clayton and have deep roots in our community. This development is not good for our area. Its design simply does not match the rural atmosphere of our community. From their vinyl/stone veneer architecture to their business plan attracting short-term residents, I just do not understand how this helps build our community. And to locate this type of development on what I feel is pivotal area defining what the future of Clayton will look like, it is not what the citizens of Clayton deserve. I would like to ask that you all please to drive through the Redwood Property in Huber off 201 and ask yourself, does this look like and feel like an area that is Clayton? Is this the future we want for Clayton? Thank you very much for your time. Mike Greer, 9581 Fox Road. The next one comes from Dave King. And Mr. King says, Mayor Stevens, I know this is not on the agenda just yet, but I hope the council will not vote the Redwood Apartments in. Being double rentals with garages, they look better than most apartments, but I oppose these after living in Clayton for 40 years and teaching and coaching at Northmont High School for 35 years and seeing the traffic there. Traffic is horrible along that area for school, sporting events, and just normal traffic along Route 40. Now add that many apartments, and it becomes worse for everyone. Look how many students walk home from school now, and you're adding many more vehicles along Route 40 and Haber. Students living there will sprint across Route 40. They've done it for years, for some that parked at the churches on the north side of 40. A traffic light at Haber and even widening Route 40 is not enough. These apartments would be a good addition to Clayton, but not in the proposed location. West of the high school by Diamond Mill would be a better fit, would be better for these. I hope you will vote against these apartments, as proposed location would make this very dangerous. Again, that's from Mr. King. And this email came from Jenny Smires. I think Jenny was on tonight. She says, Dear Mike, my name is Jenny Smires. I and my family have lived on Putnam Road since 1973. I've watched the area develop and grow. Along with development and growth, safety should be considered. For years, when Ted Gudorf was mayor and when Joyce Dietering was mayor, I've been asking the city to do something about the intersection of State Route 40 and Haber because of the volume and speed of traffic and unsafe conditions at the intersection. The last time I approached the city about this issue was in 2012. I was told then that the city was not even going to look at the issue until after the new high school building was built, which turned out to be about three and a half years later. The completion of the high school was January 2016. Since then, I know the state has twice turned down the request for a traffic light at the intersection of Haber and State Route 40, so the city is at the mercy of the state to get a new traffic light. Now the city wants to allow development of 147 units on a 33-acre parcel of farmland at State Route 40 and Haber. I've read there will be, there will not be a traffic study done before this development starts. With no guarantee of a traffic light at the intersection, how can this happen? The volume of traffic will only increase dramatically with this development. Right now, I can wait behind 20 cars going south on Haber to make a left-hand turn onto State Route 40. I've seen some close calls at the intersection. People are frustrated, and too many people take chances and will pull out to make the turn. It's a wonder no one has been more seriously injured or killed at this intersection. I understand that a petition with 1,000 signatures opposing the development was submitted to the city. I was hoping the citizens of the city would have some say in this process. Please take into consideration your citizens' concerns. I understand that the farmland can be developed, but not with such high-density development in this area. I would like you to reconsider this proposal. And again, that comes from Jenny Smires at 11208-208-Putnam Road. This person did not sign, but it comes from GA Play Nice. It says, Do not build the new apartment complex at this time. Reason number one, COVID has harmed the economic prospects of those who would live there. Reason number two, why would Clayton start down the road to having more renters than owners? Reason number three, the proposed area is too crowded. You have the high school, YMCA, and the Early Learning Center. The Early Learning Center brings traffic to a near stop every day due to the pickup of kids. The next one comes from Nancy Mercer, and Nancy was on tonight. She lives at 9250 Fox Road. To all members of council, with our regards to the Redwood Proposal Plan, please take three minutes to read our message we wrote from our heart and not from the tongue. As resident property owners, friends, and neighboring families, we have chosen our rural country-states by our heart and soul. We enjoy our own privacy that nature has given us to see. The Redwood Proposal and Clayton officials are trying to steal that privilege from a highly thoughtful rural community. We understand that a city has to grow to improve business and commercial growth along with citizens as well, but come on, this type of development does not belong in a rural area such as this. Its eyesore appearance will not attract other developers to choose Clayton as a well-groomed community. Honestly, as a 45-year construction worker, I think other problems will occur, as Northmont School activities will be a huge contested area, more so than they already are. And water runoff is a big issue, as the small little creek running southeast behind Northmont Stadium will not support that kind of water. It's downstream that it affects, so why create more problems when there are more suitable places? So please make your decision as a loyal Clayton council member. Is this really the right development that's going to help future growth to a challenging community? There are better properties and developments out there that will make the city of Clayton prosper. Not a short-term rental complex, that's price tag is too high for this neighborhood. So take consideration and thought from the heart on this house that's going to blemish our highly-recognized community. Thank you so much for your time. Again, that's from Mike and Nancy Mercer, 9250 Fox Road. And this comes from Molly McGee. I think Molly was on the call tonight. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning at the corner of National Road, National Road and Haber Road in Clayton. While the local community may be unable to prevent development, that in itself will be detrimental to the area. There are residents opposed to the addition of proposed apartment complex that will cause traffic and safety problems, create even more problems with schools that are already overcrowded or approaching capacity, destroy local wildlife habitat, and potentially lower the property values of the existing community. Traffic and safety of pedestrians are major, are areas of major, are major areas of concern. The roads in this area are not adequate to support the increase in volume. It will also negatively impact safety for children, since students may cross this busy national road to go to the junior high and high school, sporting events, and other activities. Increased need for public transportation, school buses, home deliveries will also make this a dangerous traffic concern. In general, that area traffic is continuing to increase, and heavy traffic is already common at times due to the retail establishments located on Haber Road, which may not have been anticipated during the last rezoning approval. Wildlife has been observed in the area, and any development will destroy their habitat. Any planned development of the property should consider continuing impact to local wildlife habitat. Property values are likely to go down in the area if apartments are built. I urge you to disapprove the proposed rezoning, and from discussions with family and friends, I know my opinions are shared by many. Thank you for your continued service and support of our communities. Best regards, Molly McGee. And just one more. And this comes from Madison Pickens. I think she might have been on the call tonight, too. And this, she sent this in to Mr. Dorman. Seth, I have recently learned about the zoning at National and Haber. I'm a current resident of Fox Road, and I wish to express my opinion to, my opposition to this plan. I have lived on Fox for almost five years and have always loved it because it was so quiet and country living. This area is full of single-family homes on one-acre-plus lots. We enjoy our quiet environment to live and for our children to grow and attend school nearby. That's why we decided to move where we did. While I do appreciate the city's desire to increase residents in the area, it will be very disruptive to our community and creating strongly increasing traffic safety concerns. By constructing an out-of-the-place, high-density development is not a way to go about this. Fox Road is already getting bad traffic due to Haber and National Road being backed up with school traffic. In the mornings, everyone takes Fox Road to bypass Haber and National, the busy traffic, and again in the afternoon. Everyone flies on that little old country road, and it's not really meant for heavy traffic. It's more like a little old back road. Adding hundreds of more people flying in this road will cause some major problems. I strongly urge you to deny this application and leave the development of Clayton to areas in which they are better suited. And again, that comes from Madison Pickens. So I want to thank all the folks who took the time to write the emails in. I know it was kind of a long thing, you know, listening to me read them, but we wanted to make sure they were on the record, be assured that copies were distributed to all of our council members tonight. So again, we appreciate you taking the time to do that.
I also had one additional from a Ms. Vicky Shower. Did you have one from her?
Go ahead, Kenny.
Hers stated, Good evening. I've just learned today of the proposed development for the land on the corner of Haber Road and Route 40. My husband and I are strongly opposed to this development for multiple reasons. First and foremost, our son lives at 4679 National Road. His property basically shares a property line with the ground in question. The problems that come with large complexes are activities that we would not want next to them. At his property, we raise livestock, hogs at this time and currently cattle. We feel this could be harmful to our animals, as people from this complex could and would likely come up to the fence and pet them and possibly give them things to eat that could be harmful to them, since most people don't know all the things that cows shouldn't have. I know the traffic is heavy when school is letting out. I drove a school bus for Northmont, but Haber is very busy in the mornings. Sitting there in my bus, waiting in traffic, trying to get back to the school each morning, it can get pretty backed up. And if, if it wasn't for the buses coming up 40, letting cars and buses onto 40, traffic on Haber would be backed up to Fox Road or beyond. Now add the traffic that this complex would add, and you're asking for trouble. I know that some people won't like this. Last thing I have to say, from my experiences, any areas that have a large number of rental properties attracts people that I feel would not be beneficial to our community. I'm sure there would be an uptick in petty crime in the area also, as it is a very large complex. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Vicky Shower.
Okay. Thank you. We make sure we all get copies of that also, Kenny. Appreciate that. Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting?
Second.
Motion to close this portion of the meeting by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we're going to move on with our regular council agenda. Again, I want to thank everyone who participated tonight. So our first item on the agenda is the clerk's report.
First, you have before you the council meeting minutes of February 4th, 2021.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Mr. Bachmann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to old business, and we have one item on here, and this will be the second reading, the second of two readings. So will you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0022101, an ordinance approving a 20% increase of the competitive bid threshold pursuant to the city charter sections 8.02B and 8.02C1.
Is Kevin on?
I'll move for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. And now we're going to move to new business, and we're going to read the first ordinance, which is the first of two readings. The two readings are required, and it is concerning the presentation and discussion that we had tonight. So will you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0DC2002, an ordinance either adopting, rejecting, or adopting with modifications, the planning commission's recommendation to approve with condition the application of Redwood USA LLC for a change in zoning from R1 Open Space Residential to PD3 Planned Development Business for property located at the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road, consisting of a specified portion of parcel ID number M60030120022, a specified portion of parcel ID number M60031020002, and all of parcel ID number M60031020105, and containing 33.73 acres within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Okay, that's a long description. I just want to remind everyone that we are, we're voting on the rezoning portion only. And for this ordinance, we're going to call for a roll call. So can you do that, Barb?
Do we need a motion first, or just a roll call?
I move that we reject the recommendation. I'll second that.
Okay, so can we have a roll call on that?
Can we have some discussion before we vote?
Can we have some discussion before we vote?
Well, I mean...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Not me. I have a couple of questions. All right, so first, my understanding is that this is only related to zoning. So if we, and Martina, you might be in a better position to answer this. If we say yes to the recommendation, that just deals with zoning. That does not specifically state that we approve of the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct. So basically, the only thing you're deciding tonight is whether or not to approve the request to rezone from an R1 to a PUD3. That's the only thing you're deciding.
And if we approve that, we can still reject, if we choose to, the applicant, but we would still have that zoned in accordance with our, our plan.
Right, so if you approve the rezoning, the rezoning would be approved, and then you would go on to the preliminary and final development phases. Those go before the planning commission with public hearings, and then they come before council with public hearings, and then you vote whether or not to approve those. So theoretically, yes, if I'm understanding your question correct, you could vote to approve the rezoning tonight, but then vote against the preliminary and/or final development plan later on.
And if we do that, just theoretically, if we do that, and another project, whatever you may want to call it, developer comes in, with, it's not going to change that zoning because you already approved the zoning.
Because you've already approved the zoning.
Right, so they, they would have to meet with whatever
They would have to go through
We zone that for.
Yeah, they would have to go through the development process as well.
Okay.
And satisfy, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
So after assuming we were to approve the zoning, then the next step is whether this particular developer is who we want on that property.
Yeah, they would submit, and I may refer to Seth as to the exact procedure of that, but my understanding is if the zoning is reapproved, is approved tonight, then what would happen next is they would go through the preliminary development phase spelled out in the codified ordinances. And that's when it goes before the planning commission again, and the planning commission makes a recommendation, and that would come before you again.
When the, the questions lie, I mean, there are some valid questions.
Questions about density and traffic and all those other questions, those are spelled out, and that's when the traffic study is required in the development phase. So all those density questions and things like that, that's when it, those things that you heard about and you've had heard about in the planning commissioner, that's when those really get vetted out, so to speak, is during that particular process. But yes, density and all those things would be relevant at that point in time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I got a question. It's been kind of gnawing at me since the hearing part and now this, this, this meeting part. Why hasn't the landowner themselves made the application for the zoning change?
Redwood has submitted the application on behalf of the owner. The owner signed an affidavit as part of the application acknowledging and consenting to the rezoning request.
Yeah, but Redwood's not the owner.
Redwood is representing, or submitted the application on the owner's behalf, but the owner has acknowledged and consented to the rezoning request.
And so Redwood doesn't own the property. Their condition is purchasing the property, providing the zoning goes through.
My understanding is they are in contract on the property.
Yeah, I, I have some real issues with that. You know, it should be the landowner coming forward and making this application, not, not a developer.
The owner is aware and has consented to the rezoning.
Maybe so, but that doesn't, that doesn't satisfy my, my concern.
That's a contingent, right, to sell?
I don't know the particulars of the contract, but typically, a developer will not purchase land until the zoning, the proper zoning is in place.
If I may, Mr. Merkel, it's pretty typical for developers to submit the application on behalf of the property owners. That's a pretty typical part of the process that you see in all development projects and rezoning applications.
Yeah, but even having the landowner here present to say that he's standing behind this.
And I understand, and that's the reason that it's required that he submit an affidavit that he signed stating that he was behind it and that he was consenting to the application. And Mr. Thurmond may be able to answer some of your questions better?
Might I add just that the affidavit of the property owner is notarized by Notary Public, so they witnessed the signature.
Like I said, I still have my concerns.
But the process that Mr. Lieberman stated said that it will go through a planning phase, but Redwood will own the property at that point?
I think Mr. Thurmond can answer that question about the ownership of the property better.
Are the, um... The fire chief, or am I being heard?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, so, um... As a developer for four or five decades here, we, we've never had a, a landowner whose land was under contract. We are under contract, legally bound. The sworn affidavit is the legal, uh, process and is the proper process, even if it's not understood. But, um, the, uh, all the legal documents are in place, that's, this process is proper, and we, uh, we're going through the process that your codes and ordinances require. So all I can say is, uh, it, it's a proper application. It's backed up by the owner who saw, signed and notarized an affidavit, uh, in support of our, uh, application.
I'll also comment, Mr. Merkel, that the goodwill rezoning was done in a similar way. The goodwill did not own that property, and so after the rezoning went through, they had the property owner sign an affidavit, if you remember, giving goodwill the legal authority to represent them in the rezoning case. The same was, um, was also similar for the Burger King project. The Burger King did not own that property until all the zoning processes were completed. The property owner signed an affidavit giving Burger King the legal authority to submit their zoning application.
Any other, you want to take that further, Greg?
So, Mr. Merkel, basically what's being said is they will own it if, if it is approved tonight, and if it's not approved tonight, they're, they won't own it. Is that correct, Martina?
I don't think that was what was said, Mr. Henning. Again, Mr. Thurmond can probably better answer that. I would imagine typically what happens is they have to get final approval on the entire development plan. The rezoning is just one step, and my guess, Mr. Thurmond will be able to better answer this, is that they will not own it if the property's rezoned tonight. They will still have to finish their due process with the preliminary and final development plan. And again, that's my assumption. Mr. Thurmond, can you answer that better, please?
Why does Mr. Thur, answer everything?
You, you said the public was dismissed here, is that right?
Yeah, the public is not dismissed. You're welcome to stay in, but you're, we're, we're not allowing any other comments now. We're asking Mr. Thurmond as, we're asking Mr. Thurmond as the, um, as the expert here to clarify this.
He's not an expert.
Okay, well, we're asking you, please, refrain.
He's not an expert.
Go ahead, Mr. Thurmond.
So to answer that question, I have a contract for a period of time to go through the zoning and development plan process. Whether I buy it or not is, uh, is, is up in the air. There's no, um, there's no exact, um, equation as to when that occurs, and I have rights to, um, submit the plans to the property in a period of time that I can choose to purchase the property, or, um, extend the contract, or let it go. So it's, um, when you buy a home, you have a, a home inspection period, and you decide whether or not you want to go to closing after you do your due diligence. It's, it's very similar to that, and that's the process we're following. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? What's the period of time?
Um, I, I'd rather not disclose that, and, um, that's a, that's a contract detail that is not a public detail.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Jack a question. Jack, it's my understanding that the people that have now taken over the village of New Clayton plan to fill in a large portion of that with apartments also, which we approved when we approved the, the beginning of the village of North Clayton. I believe that's back, uh, in '05 or '06 when, uh, Mr. Gudorf was still our mayor. Is that correct or incorrect? Because I think if we put too many apartments there and too many apartments here, we're, we're going to put apartments on the, all the rural preservation area.
Windsor Properties, um, they do have plans to complete. The village of North Clayton, as it was originally planned, they are, uh, in the process of making their final plans to submit an application for a modification, which will actually lower the density that was originally approved at the village of North Clayton in terms of multifamily, which includes apartments and town, connected townhouses, homes. They're aware of the Redwood project, as is Redwood is aware of Windsor Properties. They, Windsor Properties believes that they will not be in direct competition with Redwood because they will be going after different types of, uh, consumers. Um, but they are aware of this particular project, and what they've communicated to me is that they're not concerned with Redwood. They welcome Redwood because of their reputation, and they believe that they could both be complementary pieces to one another. They said Redwood has a good reputation and that they think of both, both companies are going to bring a lot of positives to the community at large.
The amount, Mr. Gorman, uh, at the last walk-around for North Clayton was 180 units, and that number was lower to 180 units because of discussions with residents. I believe they originally wanted over 300, so yeah, it may have been lowered, but it's still 180 units.
The original plan has approved 280 multifamily units at North Clayton.
And here we got 143, so we're going to have 250 apartment units in the rural preservation area, basically.
350, almost.
Excuse me, my math.
Well, from a staff perspective, I don't know exactly what the density of the Redwood project's going to be because we haven't got to that point of the project to discuss it. We're still at the rezoning. Um, the other thing I would say is that, again, this is not in the rural preservation area.
No, Jack, but we do have 15 pictures of their places, and they're all about the same density according to what I know about it.
Martina, I'm sorry, I have one more question for you. Uh, I want to make sure that whatever we do tonight, we do it the right way. What are the standards that we are supposed to use when voting on rezoning as opposed to approval for a project?
Is that better? Thanks. So basically, if you look in the rezoning cases, primary, one of the primary considerations is going to be to ask, number one, is there a comprehensive land use plan? If you have a comprehensive land use plan, what they're going to say is, is the rezoning consistent with a comprehensive land use plan? So what you have to do is take all of the testimony, evidence that you've heard tonight, process it, and determine whether or not you think that is, and then vote accordingly.
So the Plan Clayton document literally has that same area as the proposed city core.
I assume that, yeah, I mean, if that's what it said, but I can't tell you how to vote. I mean, I could tell you, what I could tell you is the standard, which is you have to determine based upon all the evidence and testimony that you've heard tonight from the public, from the applicant, from staff, and determine in your mind, based upon what's in the Plan Clayton, whether or not you feel the rezoning is consistent with Plan Clayton or not.
The Plan Clayton document, Mr. Henning, has called for this to be the Clayton Community, uh, I'm sorry, Clayton Commercial Center. It calls for a commercial and residential use. The central cores page that you're looking at in Mr. York's, uh, presentation, um, is one part of the central core section of the Plan Clayton document, which calls out central cores throughout this entire city, including along National, as well as along North Main Street.
So does the proposed center core, um, what does the plan say in regards to multifamily with that?
It calls for residential.
Just residential?
Of any type.
So the current, so currently, it's just residential.
It is zoned R1.
Right, and our land use plan, it, again, it, it would be consistent or inconsistent with our land use plan as a PD3?
Absolutely consistent with the, the future land use plan that shows it as Clayton Commercial Center, uh, the combination of flex, mix, uses, and parks.
Okay.
But that's only if it's amended.
The proposed rezoning, um, staff is supporting it because it is consistent with Plan Clayton.
Anything else? Questions or comments? Okay, so is there a motion to?
We had a motion.
We already had. It's, all right, so we ready for the roll call? Okay, Barb, we give a...
Could you say what the motion is again?
I moved that we rejected the planning commission's recommendation, and I got a second from Mr. Gorman.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call on that?
Bachman?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
No.
Stevens?
No. Okay, so we have four and three, and, um, I'm going to lean on Martina again on this one, because there are some, there is language in our charter that allows for, uh, vote counts like this when the planning commission has already approved the, uh, the plan. So Martina?
Thanks, Chief. So what the code, what the codified ordinance says is, basically, when you have a recommendation from the planning commission on a rezoning such as this, in order to approve, you would need four votes, which if I'm counted correctly, we only had three to approve the recommendation of the planning commission.
That's, that's correct.
And you need five votes in order to reject the recommendation of the planning commission, and if I counted correctly, we had four votes to reject. So essentially, we have, under the code, an insufficient number of votes to either reject or to approve, so it basically dies on the table. There are insufficient number of votes to move it forward to the next step.
Okay, is there any questions or comments for Martina on that?
So, so the next meeting, we will be voting on this again, since this is Mark...
There, there's not enough votes to move it under the code forward to the next meeting. We needed five votes to reject or four votes to approve. We've got four... We've got four to reject and three to approve, so we have an insufficient number of votes to either reject or approve. So efficiently, it's, or effectively, it's, it's dead on the table, so we cannot move forward without a, a sufficient number of votes, which we do not have.
Okay, thank you, Martina. Okay, we have, uh, three resolutions that are on the agenda tonight. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-02-21-15, a resolution approving a new collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, setting forth the wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment for the sergeants within the Clayton Police Department for the period April 1, 2021, through March 31st, 2024. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, give me just a minute.
We do have a new camera and speaker on order for my office, so it shouldn't be an issue much longer. Um, this is the collective bargaining agreement with our sergeants. Um, it effectively gives them a two percent increase that the rest of staff got. Um, it also increases their uniform allowance, um, you know, as things go on, they get more expensive, so it increases their uniform allowance. It also provides them with an education bonus, which we think can be a good recruiting tool of a thousand dollars for an associate's or bachelor's degree in a law enforcement field. Um, and then also a sixty-cent stipend, um, per hour, which totals one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. And in exchange for this, management got, uh, the ability to effectively set scheduling without shift bidding, and the ability for the chief to move people around as needed. And we're requesting and recommending approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good job on that. And Barb, will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-02-21-16, a resolution establishing rates and fees at Meadowbrook at Clayton for the year 2021.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Meadowbrook at Clayton is in, uh, its seventh year of operation, if you can believe it or not, um, as a city-owned golf course and event facility. Uh, the rate and fee structure was last amended in 2019, and after we reviewed usage trends, rates of other, uh, similarly, uh, similar, uh, situated facilities and market trends, it appears that Meadowbrook's rates are, um, competitive, uh, with the area. So we are recommending this evening that the only changes that be made to the fee structure is that we're creating a fair share policy and implementing a resident rate for greens fee. Um, although we've already had one established for the membership fee, we've never had one established for the daily greens fee, uh, so we would like to see that, which would be two dollars less than the current rates. Um, also, we would increase the nine-hole prime time rate, which is Saturdays and Sundays before 1:00, uh, two dollars. Also, we're recommending that event facility rental rates remain stagnant for any bookings in 2021. Um, of course, if facility updates are made, uh, we can revisit that in 2022. There any questions?
Any questions or comments for Elaine?
Have, um, will this information be in the city's spring newsletter?
Um, unfortunately, um, I, we're right in the midst of the, um, getting the newsletter together, so I don't know, um, if the publication time and, um, the approval time will match up, but we certainly will try.
And, and these rates are competitive with the other people in the area? I heard a couple people say our rates were higher, that's the reason I ask, I'm not a golfer.
Yep, um, I actually, if you're interested, did do, uh, compile some, um, data to be able to see which ones, um, were higher or lower than.
I trust you a hundred percent. If you say it's competitive, that's fine, Elaine.
Okay.
Does other municipalities have a resident rate versus a non-resident rate?
Um, yes, Castle Hills Golf Course does. Um, I do know that offhand. Um, City of Dayton, uh, even though they closed two of their golf courses, the one that still remains open, they do not have, um, a resident, non-resident rate. Um, I do believe, uh, Beaver Creek and, uh, Beaver Creek does have, um, the resident rate.
What about a family rate? I mean, I see that you have the second member of the same household, but what about a family rate?
Um, we haven't typically, um, because I come from a background of recreation, where that does make sense, where there are family passes and things, golf courses don't tend to have family rates. Um, and we also do permit anybody, um, under twelve or under to be able to golf with, um, an adult who pays a greens fee. So we are still getting the younger generation to, um, to golf, to try to introduce that.
But if the father and son both live in Clayton, they both get the discount, right?
That is correct, and it would be, um, they could do the junior pass with the, um, with the adult pass, which I'd have to see if, uh-
Well, he might be fifteen, not young enough for the junior pass, though, Elaine.
Um, the junior pass is anyone still in high school, or, um, eighteen or younger.
Okay, any other questions for Elaine?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Bachman to approve, second by Mr. Gorman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you.
And Barb, will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-02-21-17, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept proposal of America's Decorative Concrete Limited and enter into an agreement with America's Decorative Concrete Limited for specified 2021 concrete curb, gutter, catch basin, and related work in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-two dollars and forty cents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have five roads on this year's curb repair, and American Decorative Concrete, ADC, was the actual last contractor we had, not the one on Salem Avenue, but the one prior to that that did Skylark and Rathburn. Uh, they were the low bidder this year, um, and, um, it'll kick off our, uh, concrete season before our paving project.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Sanders on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you both for that. Okay, we're on to the city manager's report. She's on her way.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just one item for you this morning, or for this evening. Um, I know I'll say in a little bit, um, the board, um, sorry, we need to reappoint people to the Board of Tax Review. Um, all three, excuse me, all three members are, terms are expiring on 3/7/2021. Um, we will bring legislation on March 4th, so if you want to reach out, or we can reach out to see if these people are still interested in serving, or if you have other people you would like, uh, we'll have legislation at the next meeting. Is there any questions?
See if you're good with being reappointed.
All right, well, that's two, so, are there any questions this evening? All right.
Is that it? That was short.
That was. I'm efficient.
Okay, um, so we're gonna move on to visitors' comments. If there's any visitors that would want, like to make a comment, you're still, um, welcome to, so anybody that's still out there? Anyone want to say anything? I don't see any hands raised or anyone talking, so we're gonna ask one more time. Visitors? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on. Council, um, we'll start with Mr. Merkel.
He did it to me again. Well, uh, the, um, the point of reality is that in order for the city to be successful moving forward, we're gonna have to find ways of bringing development into the city that is gonna be constructive and desirable, and placed in areas where it's gonna be the most benefit. There's been a lot of comments made about Haver Road and National Road as far as speed limits and access and traffic lights, and those are all issues that have been present that I've heard for the last ten years, and there are things that need to be addressed. Um, I had made comments ten years ago that I thought the speed limits on Haver Road needed to be reduced, and I mean, I remember at that point in time, there was a lot of opposition to lowering the speed limits. Uh, I also believe back when Dave Rollins was city manager, that the speed limit on National Road needed to be reduced, from the point of Diamond Mill Road all the way down to the Inglewood Boundary. You know, because you have the high school, the middle school, now you have an elementary school, you have a lot of other residential streets that dump onto National Road, so there needs to be an, an opportunity for traffic to travel at a more reasonable speed on, on a stretch of road where you have a lot of side streets. Yes, there's a lot of accidents that you hear about, but what you don't hear about are the, are those number of incidents that have not happened where they've been a near miss. And those near misses are those events that where somebody had a close call and could have had either a serious injury or fatality, which we want to avoid. We need to move forward and find constructive ways of taking care of those things, and the concerns along Haver Road, the residents along that street expressed are valid, and need to be taken care of at the earliest opportunity.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Lieberman?
Um, you know, I, I, I heard, um, tonight, and I think everybody had some good points. Uh, I, I think, in my mind, uh, those points would have been better addressed at the next level, uh, because I'm concerned about where we stand with now being able to fulfill, uh, the very plan that we, you know, that we have all signed up on years ago, uh, only on the question of zoning. This may not have been the development that we wanted, but I felt that if we rejected the vote, the zoning tonight, which we basically did, it's now dead, that, um, it may cause us problems in the future. And it, that, that is the only reason I voted the way I voted, um, 'cause I, I feel that a lot of the traffic issues are valid issues, and, and a lot of the draining issues are valid issues, and, and a lot of the issues that were brought up tonight are valid issues. Uh, but we can't address them unless we have the money or the leverage to be able to address those. So, I, I just want us to keep an open mind in the future if we're gonna be able to put this plan into effect. And that, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Hey, thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Even though I think that we can agree to disagree with a lot of different levels and a lot of different zoning approaches, I feel like we all respect each other, and there was valid points for and against. In some ways, I agree with different opinions on that too as well, but what we had at hand, I think, I think we all made a decision we had to make, whether it be for or against, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gorman?
I'd just like everybody to be safe and get your shots and keep your mask on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
Just, uh, thank the service department for the great job they did with the snowfalls this week. Um, I know I saw they were working very long shifts, so we thank you for all the hard work you put in with that. Um, the one reminder I have is, I, I think we really need to stay on top of, um, making sure cars are not in the streets when we get larger snowfalls. Um, some streets in the neighborhoods did have cars still parked, and they're absolutely plowed in right now, which would make it very hard for ambulances or fire trucks, um, to get where they maybe need to go quickly. So, just for the protection of your neighbors, um, and our family and friends, I would just ask if, that you follow, um, the ordinances that we have in place, if there is over three inches of snow, take your cars off the streets, and I think, um, I, I thank the police department for doing a good job on staying on top of that with everything else they have to do. Um, so, thank you all.
Hey, thank you, sir. Mr. Bachman?
Nothing to add tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, sir. Uh, I just want to say just a couple kudos, uh, thanks to Mr. Sanders and the street department. You guys really did a good job. You know, it's the biggest snow we've had in quite a while, and I think it was really, you guys did a really good job. Um, I've visited several of our neighboring cities, and, uh, we were better than all. Uh, everyone was pretty decent, um, but, uh, I think we really did a good job on this, so, um, just tell everyone thank you for that. I also wanted to, uh, to just give a shout-out to some of our police officers. You know, we, we don't always get emails that are, um, quite as glowing as this, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, uh, obviously, but, um, I want to, uh, thank, uh, this came from, uh, Patrick Ernst, it was, uh, he had a, a police issue that he had to take care of, was, uh, someone had broke into his shed, and I just wanted to say, um, thanks to Sergeant Sanders, Officer Deskins, Sean Shutey, and also Lindsey D'Avali here in our office. Uh, he was very complimentary on the way we handled the, uh, the complaint, and, um, he just, he just goes, oh, it's a full page of on and on about how, how happy he was with the service, so, uh, thanks to those folks and all of our, uh, first-line responders out there. Okay, um, that's it for me. Is there a-
I'll move to adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to adjourn, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thanks all.